I'd like to call to order the meeting of the -- first, we will deal with the Advanced Transportation District for Tuesday, November 12, 2013. Are there any reports?
I will do the report as part of the VIA meeting, and so we can move to number two.
Okay. Can I ask Mr. Martin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? We offer a moment of silence for the people in the Philippines, just for a moment, please. Mr. Art, are there any announcements?
No, ma'am.
All right. Move along to item number three, the consent agenda.
Move for approval, second.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That takes us to item number four, ratification of appointments to the San Antonio Bear County Metropolitan Plan Organization. Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Board members and Mrs. Daniel. For this item, the MPO just recently, in expanding its boundaries and expanding its composition, added new positions at membership of the MPO Policy Board, retaining the VIA position on the membership, but also adding the Advanced Transportation District as a member of the MPO Policy Board. And so, the ratification of appointments is to name and add the members for representing the VIA Metropolitan Transit, and the second, also the ATD, the Advanced Transportation District, and recommend that Mr. Gerald Lee represent the Advanced Transportation District on the MPO Policy Board. And also, Dr. Gambetta would be the VIA representative on the MPO Policy Board.
Are there any questions or comments? This is not an action, am I just?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number five, mobility projects.
Yes. So, Board members, my name is Clay Smith, Director of the Advanced Transportation District, and today, I asked Mario Jorge, the new District Engineer with TechDOT. Mario is not a new District Engineer, he's been a District Engineer in the Farr District and has almost over 30 years with TechDOT, and I asked him to come and talk about mobility projects and status of projects within the MPO area as they relate to the ATD and VIA. And so, Mario, if you'd come and provide an update, and some of these, if you recall, US 281, there was a resolution about a year ago that talked about improvements on 281, including non-toll express lanes in preparation for the transit priority managed lanes, and as a part of that, the ATD provided for US 281 and 1604, recommended $100 million of ATD dollars to support this effort. And so, Mario is going to give us kind of an update on that whole program. Yeah, let's move.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board members. Pleasure to be here with you all. Again, like Clay mentioned, my name is Mario Jorge, I'm the District Engineer for TechDOT in San Antonio. So, pleased to be here with you all today. I hope to have a good presentation, a good discussion, and update on a number of projects that we're working on with you all's partnership. So, go ahead and click onto the map here. Just start off with general location map, and what you see there, we have some projects highlighted, which I'll explain into a little bit more detail. But there's basically three types of improvements that we indicate on the map. One is extension of just typical expressway expansion, which we're planning for 1604 and a portion of 281. Then we show in blue the addition of introduction of managed lanes. And a definite little definition on the managed lane concept is something that has been utilized in some other areas very successfully, and it involves a transit priority lane where your transit system can operate freely. Also, the potential high occupancy vehicle lane where we can take and encourage carpooling in that fashion, and also it would serve as a toll lane for a single occupant vehicle. So, it's a system of managing the congestion and lanes that I think offers a lot of versatility for the transit system. So, that's what you see on there. And then, of course, some interchanges that we'll be looking at, some improvements associated with the I-35 project. And at this time, I'll go into a little bit more detail on each project, starting with the 281 that Clay mentioned. You know, the limits of the project are from 1604 all the way to the Kamal Bear County line, and the improvements are kind of structured in a way to expand to a four-lane expressway with frontage roads from 1604 to Stone Oak. That matches what the current MPO plan is. There would also be one additional managed lane in each direction, as I described, transit priority lanes, from 1604 to Stone Oak. There would be the completion of the interchange at 1604 and 281, which, as you all know, only half of it is completed. And then, we would also construct a connection from the managed lanes to a VIA proposed park and ride system that would tie into the transit priority lanes. And then, in addition to that, from Stone Oak all the way to the county line, it would expand to include six managed lanes with frontage roads. That's the current plan in the MPO, and that is currently the project development activity that is ongoing with the RMA as the lead entity, but with our very close coordination. They're currently in the process of determining the preferred alternative and finalizing the environmental impact statement, so we anticipate environmental clearance at some point next year, early 2015. And this is an example of the access facility to a park and ride on I-10 Katy Freeway in Houston. You can see how it would be a direct connection, again, which would serve to a proposed park and ride. And that will be included in, the connection will be included as part of the project that we're currently pursuing on 281. As far as the funding for 281, the total project cost, including all the, as per the MPO plan, is $521 million. We're looking at an initial first phase that will cost 458, which essentially, we would defer one managed lane in each direction north of Stone Oak. So, instead of a six managed lane total, we would do four, two in each direction. We've got some funding that has been currently identified, as in the past, there's about 150 million of federal and state funds, combination of those. There is 30 million from the City of San Antonio, some of their bonds, and then there's $48 million from the Advanced Transportation District funds, which are part of the $100 million that Clay mentioned earlier. So, there's, and of course, and then the gap of the cost, which is approximately 230 million, we anticipate will be closed with the toll revenues from the managed lane facility. So, in the preliminary financial analysis that we have run, that seems to play out. So, we feel like the project, as stated, is fully financed within its own merits. Moving on to 1604, this is on the western end of the project, from Stay Highway 16, which is Bandera Road, out to 90. Our proposal there is to expand to a four-lane expressway with frontage roads. They will all be non-toll. There would also be an interchange at 151 and 1604. And the envelope, the typical section of that particular project would allow for future expansion in the middle to add possibly managed lanes in the future as the need arises. And there's an example right there of what it would look like with the express lanes, frontage roads, and then room in the middle for the future expansion as needed. The cost of this, the projects identified, and there's multiple projects, three different projects in total, is $343 million. The identified funding to this point is about 99.8 million, almost 100 million of federal and state funds. There's 144 million of Advanced Transportation District funds. 52 million of that is the complement of the 100 that we mentioned, 48 go to 281, 52 go to this 1604 section. And then, 92 million from ATD funds is due to the Texas Mobility Fund swap that was made for your project. There's a gap then, that about $100 million gap for the southern piece out to 90 that our commission is working closely with Bear County, with the RMA, with the City of San Antonio, and with VIA, so that we can close that gap, and we hope to have a plan in place very soon for the entire piece. Let's switch gears to I-10, Interstate 10, out west, from FM 3351 to Loop 1604. That is essentially from Ralphair Road to 1604. And the proposed improvements there is to add one managed lane in each direction, which would be, again, a transit priority lane, and also construct the priority red connectors at 1604. Now, the total project cost of that, including the connectors, is approximately 200 million, but 70 million of it is for the actual managed lanes from 3351 to 1604. And we've identified some funding with the vehicle registration fees that the county has set aside for the RMA, so that seems to be in place for that. And then, there'll also be some toll revenues that will help us close the gap for the direct connector. So, again, that's a project that we feel can add a significant mobility to this entire segment. And there's a picture of what the managed lanes on I-10 would look like with a one lane in each direction in the middle. I guess we probably should have drawn a bus on that, the managed lane. The intent is obviously for the high priority transit lanes.
It was actually going faster than it had to its destination.
The, this next part of the project is the continuation of the managed lanes on 1604 from Bandera Road all the way to I-35. And again, the proposed improvements there is to add two managed lanes in each direction, construct the interchange improvements at I-10. The total project cost for this project is 840 million. There's currently about $72 million in federal and state funds available. The rest would have to be from toll revenue, however, there will be a gap in funding that we're trying to work on. This project is also being advanced through the environmental process by the RMA in close coordination with us, so we hope to have the environmental clearance in about a year and a half for this project. And a project that we've just kicked off, we've kicked off over a few months ago, and we had some public involvement a couple of weeks ago to present the, kind of, the next stage in project development, and that is to construct an elevated section on I-35, consisting of two managed lanes in each direction. And the limits would be from 410 south in the vicinity of Walter Street, all the way to FM 1103 in Sibolo. Again, two managed lanes in each direction, which, again, would have transit priority lanes, and then interchange improvements at 410, both north and south, and also at 1604. Now, this is a project that the total approximate cost is in the vicinity, in the range of one and a half to two billion. Currently, the funding that we've identified is strictly the toll revenue from this project. However, we are running some more detailed financial analysis, which will hopefully be available in the next month or two, that will give us a better idea of the financial viability of this project. We think it has a lot of potential for the region. So, trying to summarize the whole plan for you all, our strategic mobility plan that we're working on with the county, with the city, RMA, and with the VIA and ourselves, we feel like it will provide significant improved mobility. I think it will have some transportation alternatives available to our community. It will provide, like I mentioned, the transit priority through the use of the managed lanes. There is an opportunity for multimodal integration with the connections to the US 281 Park and Ride that we talked about, plus other park and ride locations to be determined. And finally, the $100 million ADT funding will help, if put together with the rest of the federal funding, the other local funds, and the toll revenue, we feel will help us advance over $3 billion worth of improvements to this region. And really, just to close, on my behalf, this system of transit priority lanes, integration of multimodal, I think has the potential to be transformational to our region and actually open up the transit system to a commuter market share that maybe is not there today. The connectivity to the various park and rides, and the quick mobility and quick flow of traffic through these managed lanes, I think has tremendous potential. So, we're pretty excited. I think the intent of the resolution that this board passed over a year ago, I think it's right in line with what we're proposing here. Like I said, we're working very closely with the RMA on this project development. The 281, we will proceeding to be the lead entity in the implementation with the proper project development agreements and financial agreements with the RMA. So, we're pretty excited that we're moving forward in this entire plan, and so, that's pretty much it, I think. Just wanted to share that with you, provide you all an update. I know there's some other action items that will need to follow this presentation, and just open it to any questions you'll have on our plan.
Anyone from the board like to comment or ask any questions?
Madam Chair.
Please.
My question is regarding the toll revenue management. Who's going to manage the toll lane?
Yes, sir. Right now, the entity that will be operating and maintaining the managed lanes will be the RMA. Those agreements are all still need to be, obviously, worked out, but they are the toll entity for this region, and they would have the right of first refusal.
They're one of the toll entities, right? They're one of the toll?
Yes, yes.
We can do it ourselves?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you're saying that instead of using the private firm to run the tolls, it will be run by the RMA?
Yeah. Our intent right now is for the RMA to be the operator of these facilities. If they're not willing to do that, then we could, TechDOT could operate it ourselves. Obviously, we can do that too. And so, but at this point, the intention is for the RMA to go ahead and operate and maintain these rules. This matters, guys.
Other questions or comments? Anyone? I'd just like to reiterate that bullet at the bottom, the $100 million of ATD funds to help leverage $3.3 billion worth of improvements. We have that track record in the past, and I personally am delighted to see that leveraging capability going forward, and sincerely appreciate you being here and being with us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, I think this can be transformational to our region if we introduce that transit priority lanes to our overall mobility. We're excited about that.
We appreciate that, Senator. Thank you. We would like to see a bus on that presentation.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we'll be working with Mr. Art in a follow-up, maybe next month, on a resolution to have amend our agreement with the Bear County to, for that ATD agreement to continue through. Previously, that's, we have an agreement with the ATD and Bear County, and so, we'll be coming back to look at amending that agreement so that the $100 million agreement could then be executed.
By the way, Clay, I noticed, could you go back to that slide where we showed the managed lane with the car instead of a bus?
That one, no, no.
I want you to notice there's no gridlock on that slide. You may have to show some traffic on that one.
Well, yeah, yes, sir. We wanted to show that, I guess, the combination of through lanes and managed lanes, how they would be divided. But yeah, once you have traffic on there, it will be a whole different picture. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clay. All right. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the ATD.
So moved.
First, and Mr. Miller, second, and Mr. Lee. We are adjourned from the ATD. That brings us to the regular VIA Metropolitan Transit VIA Board Meeting for Tuesday, November 12, 2013. I would like to ask Mr. Art, has a report?
Sure. I have two items I'd like to share today. They're both kind of technology items. The first is that we are ready to, or we're right at the edge of introducing a new website, and so Steve Cerna is going to demonstrate a bit, a short bit, on the new website. We plan to have this go live later this week, and it's got a new look and feel, and of course, we'll work to augment the information that's behind that, but he's kind of cycling through right now. Steve, why don't you talk about it here?
In redesigning the site, we put a priority on how things are organized. As you can imagine, when you really visit a site, what's more important than how it looks is how you're able to navigate through it and find the information you want. So, right up front, you'll see all the key features that our riders request the most out of our current website and out of our customer service. So, we have our different services that we provide, information on fares, but also our rider tools where people can plan their trips. And a big feature of the new site is we're using the new trip planner from Trapeze that really gives customers much more information. It uses, integrates with Google, which people are really familiar with. So, the trip planner is a real huge improvement on this site. But there's also other information on current openings, what we're doing to move forward in the future with projects like SmartWay and SmartMove, what we're doing in the community, information about the organization, including our board, our board meetings, other, our economic opportunity program, et cetera. So, we're just really putting the dots on the I and crossing the Ts, and we're really ready to launch this and happy to do so.
And so, as I said, this will be rolling out later this week, and it's a very, a good move forward. Since the time I actually looked to interview here and saw the VIA website, I thought that there was a real need to refreshen it, and it was a good effort here. And of course, we also have the SmartMove website, to which there is a link right there, which we'd previously, that's a great website too, great design, very usable, very flexible. So, that's the first thing. And the second thing I would report is that November will be the month in which the new fare boxes are introduced in full to the public. We've put new fare boxes on the rubber tire trolleys downtown just to get them out there so we can take a look at the reporting, we can get out, make sure we can get the data out of the system. We are anticipating that on November 25th, we would have the entire system outfitted, and we'll start the Phase 1, and you recall, we're going to introduce functionality in separate phases. So, the Phase 1, we'll have the electronic transfers, for example, that we'll be introducing at that time. And so, right before Thanksgiving, we should have the fare boxes out on the street. That's my report.
Any questions from the board? We'll look forward to the new website. Thank you. All right. That moves us on to item number four, citizens to be heard.
Madam Chairwoman, we have three citizens to be heard. The first one is Damon Mason.
Do you realize that your previous presentation during the ATD Board Meeting made it very easy, so, so, made it very easy for me to zone out? I mean, seriously. Okay. My main, I mean, reasonable comment coming to you, is in response to CAF 349,546. It says here that, okay, in addition to being vague, as this response here, it says here that additionally, VIA does not currently have the resources to create a short haul Route 14 traveling to Randolph Park and Ride. Okay. I take immense homage at that. Okay. Let's, okay, first of all, let's take a look around at this building. The previous owner surely did not give you that building because he liked the way you looked. Take a look, okay, now, all this tech, all this technology here, that it was not customized because, you know, because you liked, because you liked the way you looked. Now, take a look, okay, now, take a look at your monkey suits. That had to cost at least $1,000, at the very, at the very, at the very least. Each and every mainline motor coach out in the yard and probably around the streets, that had to cost at least $300,000. Okay. Now, now, let's see. Let's see. Oh, and, oh, and, you know, you know, you're probably not driving junk, you're probably not driving junk. I've seen some of the auto billys drive, they're not junk, they're not junker loppies. Are you living in crime, are you living in a crime ghetto? Probably not, probably not. So, okay, and, and you're, and of course, and you're trying to police, well, they, were they working for you if they, if they had a worker for you? Probably not, probably not, probably not. So, like I said, so, your claims that VIA does not currently have the resources to create a short haul Route 14 as a heap of bovine body exhaust. Yeah. Now, if you, now, if you really, now, if you really want to, you know, some advice about how to allocate your funds, each and every, each and every NAMBY diesel motor coach is a little, is a little more than an overglorified Cal trailer better suited for the junkyard. Bring that about, bring that about, and then, and then I'll be able to acknowledge when you, when you just simply don't have the resources.
Yes, my name is Laurie Zertucci. I have a question. When I call to make a reservation, say, like, if I call tomorrow for Thursday, VIA, the agents tell me that... agents tell me that they started some new policy or something where you, once you make that reservation, you have to call two hours after you make that reservation or before midnight to confirm. If you fail to call before midnight, then the trip you make will probably be canceled. And so they say it's important for you to confirm your reservations, and they said, they made it in order to lessen the denial that they sometimes have to give to some of the patrons. But if they're going to, if VIA is going, VIA Trans is going to institute some sort of policy like that, they should write or email their patrons because not all people understand or know what it is, because some people, when they call to make a reservation for the next day, they said they were never told that, and so VIA Trans needs to clarify with all the patrons if they're going to add a policy like that. And another question I have on, what does AVL mean? I was reading that consent agenda, and it says AVL for Paratransit Vans Equipment. So I just want to know what AVL meant. Thank you.
As far as VIA Trans, they don't give them enough time when they make the reservation. It should be 24 hours in advance, and they don't do it. Now, I said last meeting, I'm going to say again, when y'all have road call, you're supposed to call, call road to find out who's here and who's not here, and VIA is in violation of the law. In 1970, I took government in school. They said we had to call road calls to know who's here and who's not here, not that the secretary would just write who's here and who's not here. We need to know. Bear County Commissioners Court, they have five people, and then Judge Wolfsey, is everybody here, is somebody missing? Mr. Sorsos not here, let the record show Mr. Sorsos is not here. So y'all not doing right. And I told Barney Elder, and I told Frank Gardner, Frank know better, because he used to work for the city, he know darn well that they have to call road. Every time you have a city council meeting, the secretary called road, somebody called road to see how many people are not here and how many people is here. So y'all going to have to correct that. Now, as far as the Primo Bus, it's doing good, but it's running late all the time because there's a lot of traffic on Banderas. I got here at 4:20, they said you can't come in until 4:30. No matter where you go, they let you come in an hour and sit down and relax, and they have security and they have cameras. Okay? So that needs to be corrected. Mr. Art had talked to y'all at the last meeting, and VIA do what they want to do. And then they said VIA was going to get sued. They announced it over the meeting, they said the meeting is going to be today, regular board meeting. They didn't say what time. That's on one of the news meetings. Nobody knows. It's the biggest secret in town. I had lost something, went to the ID, the guy took my name when he got the package. I need to see your ID card. I let him look at it, he putting it in the computer. He cannot put your ID card in the computer. I was at SeaWorld one day, and this security, not police, asked me for my ID. And the city police said, no, you can't do that. You are not a policeman, you cannot do that. These, this ride is too small, the new bus shelter that they built, it don't keep the rain, the cold, and the hail, anything else off of you. And we already talked about road call. We told, I told y'all that the wheelchairs don't have a strap to it, I get allowed to talk about, well, we've got a new type, it doesn't matter what you got, it still is not working right. Midcrown, I told VIA that to have the CPS go out there, all your bus stops, a lot of them don't have street lights. VIA write me back and tell me to call CPS. I don't have no call, no car. VIA have to do that. That's their job. Y'all are to send a supervisor out tomorrow, go to every bus stop, whether they have a bus stop or not. The name place need be face forward where we can see them. The new fare box need to be pushed back eight months because it's a joke. You put the money in, and then if you don't have the money for the fare box, for the transfer, you're going to have to pay another dollar or something. That's crazy. So I will continue with my same thing until y'all start having road call at the next meeting. Have a nice day.
There are more citizens to be heard.
That takes us to item number five, the consent agenda. Before we take action, let me note that item number I is, will be pulled and taken up under item nine, legal briefing. The balance of the consent agenda, looking for motions. All in favor? That takes us to item number six. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay, we will now go ahead and take up item I in executive session. The time is now 5:47 o'clock PM, and the VIA Metropolitan Transit Board of Trustees will officially go into a closed executive session. The items we will discuss during this executive session are as follows. Item 5.1 entitled Modern Streetcar Update, which is an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section 551.071 entitled Consultation with Attorney, and item nine entitled Legal Briefing, which is an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section 551.071 entitled Consultation with Attorney. All persons who are authorized to attend the executive session, please proceed to the small conference room. All right, it's now 6:16 o'clock PM, and we were officially coming out, we are officially coming out of a closed executive session regarding agenda, item 5.1 and nine. No deliberations of public policy or vote taking occur during the executive session. All right, that takes us to item number six, the ratification of appointments to the San Antonio Bear County Metropolitan Planning Organization, NPO Policy Board. Do y'all want another briefing on it? We had it in ATD. Anybody? Okay. All right.
We need a motion.
Motion, second.
I'll say.
You move?
No, she did.
Oh, Catherine did, okay. And Mr. Martin seconded, okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number seven, Real Estate and Development Consultant, update on scope of work and previous work efforts by the Real Estate Development Consultation Team, Mr. Buchanan.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Joining me this evening is Andrew Knudsen with Economic and Planning Systems. They're the firm that we chose a couple months ago for the real estate developer or the real estate and development consultant contract that we got going on. As many of you know, in 2014, VIA's initiatives in the planning department are multifaceted, but one of the big ones is to look at transit-oriented development around the community, look at any strategic acquisitions we may want to look at over the next several years and planning for those, and getting up to speed on the ability to enter into public-private partnerships and real estate development deals as things move forward with multimodalism here in San Antonio. So we have brought on the Economic and Planning Systems team this evening. They are just getting underway. They're going to give you a kind of an outline of what their scope of work is with us, and also some of the work they've done in previous cities and other cities, and also talk a little bit about their team. So with that, Andrew.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, Brian. Good evening. Happy to be here and help explain a little bit about our team and the services that we bring to VIA. So the overall role of our firm and the effort of this project, you can see summarized here on this slide. In a nutshell, we're trying to help maximize opportunities. There's a goal, overall goal, to increase ridership, but there's also this notion of stewardship. How do we apply the public funds that have been invested in VIA and get the fullest benefit possible out of them? Finally, partnership is key. Not only are there various public agencies out there, but there are a series of private developers that hopefully VIA will be able to engage as we move forward with different development options. The role of VIA, not only is it defining a role specifically around public policy and planning, but there are also a whole series of specifics that need to be brought together. One of the efforts, and this is key, and one of the things that we'll be trying to do with the agency, is align the various divisions within the agency towards this goal. This joint development is difficult enough, and getting internal alignment is key, and something that is impediments and hurdles in other agencies that we've worked in. Couple other points that we're trying to do, draw from national experience. We think that we've worked on some projects that are pretty exciting. Obviously, there's a way to calibrate that to the local environment and local real estate market, but at the end of the day, there are iconic projects that have really transformed the brands of other agencies that we've worked with, and we think that we can bring that in in terms of the national experience. There is the third bullet up on the screen, I want to read that, specifically, providing a platform for land use economics to underpin the TOD and joint development process, public-private partnerships, and financing strategies. Our technical analysis will give you the platform to be able to engage in partnerships. The data are solid, and you'll be able to understand the various pros and cons of different options and move forward with confidence. And then lastly, funding. Our team has a variety of ways to bring funding to the table, whether that be local or with relationships here in the state or federal agencies. Here's an overview of the structure, and I'm going to move, I'm going to speed up some of these first slides in the program. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail, but ultimately, we'll be, I think we can give you this overview relatively quickly. Our team involves URS out of the Dallas and Austin offices. We've worked with them on other, with other transit agencies around the country. They bring expertise related to transit systems, ops, funding, and FTA compliance. EPS in the middle there, I'm the project manager. We will be bringing vast, or extensive analysis related to the real estate development opportunities, financing, market analysis, also policy. One of the things that we do, much of our work involves public and private sector agencies, and it's the intersection of public and private, and how you take technical information and create a public policy to advance. We also have Vicry Associates and 4M, which are local team members. So Economic and Planning Systems specifically, we have four offices. I happen to be in the Denver office, and transit agent, transit work represents about a third of all of our work. URS, obviously a very large firm, $50 billion in transit experience. We will be working with Austin and Dallas offices and their knowledge, particularly of Texas and their Tech Dot, will be very beneficial. Vicry, a local civil engineering firm, and their local knowledge is very helpful, and their technical work related to civil engineering will be an advantage. 4M Realty, also very knowledgeable about the local real estate market. Not only will they be giving us the market inputs for our feasibility assessment, but they also have a network in terms of understanding the opportunities in the market. Program approach, number one, how do you increase organizational capacity? It's one thing to evaluate the various options from a technical perspective. Ultimately, what we want to do is convey that expertise to the staff and build capacity of the whole organization. We think in terms of program approach, there's some prioritization of opportunities that needs to happen, and then moving forward with joint development efforts, especially the process of how you work with those proposals on the whole, and ultimately engaging the developers on specific projects. We can come back to this if there are questions, but here are the four key players that will be working on the project. Here are some examples of joint development that we've worked on in the past. I think the Denver Union Station is the most interesting at the moment. It's amazing how much investment is going around this central node in downtown Denver. The amount of investment that RTD, your counterpart in Denver, has done with this facility, and the amount of leverage that's occurred in terms of private sector development around this facility is absolutely incredible. It hit the market hot, and the traction is very strong, and we're seeing rents being written 15, 20, 25, 30% above averages for the Denver area downtown market specifically, showing that transit does bring a premium, and that premium is actually being captured through two different revenue mechanisms that bring, that help fund the public improvements that the transit agency fronted. Alameda Station is also interesting, and it's exciting just to see these projects go vertical. That's under construction now. The other two have been, they're still in the works. Dallas, in terms of Mockingbird, we're working with DART now on these three different opportunities, Mockingbird and expansion, Trinity Mills and Buckner. One of the thing on DART specifically is just the whole notion of competing interests. DART has one goal, the private sector developers have other goals, and bringing them together is the key effort as part of our work. The team brings quite a bit of TOD experiences, experience throughout the western part of the United States, also in terms of the applications of all of the various TOD work listed there. In terms of, one of the first steps that we'd like to do is station screening. This is an example that we did out of our Berkeley office in California. You can see that this agency had 49 stations, and ultimately, we'd identified 14 that represented the low-hanging fruit, if you will, of where joint development would be viable. This is another way, another way of looking at different station areas. This is just a way of comparing development readiness to market readiness, understanding the, in this case, again, low-hanging fruit of where a community can find market traction as they advance joint development goals. These slides in terms of evaluation are representative of evaluation criteria that we developed for DART. It's a way, it's an example of how we do our work that ultimately is very transparent. The work we do, the evaluation criteria, how we evaluate the different options is easy to track, in this case, property attributes, accessibility, development readiness, market demographics. All of them have various metrics to score, ultimately showing the direction forward. I think it is particularly helpful to the extent that there's a larger audience in the larger community that wants to understand how VIA makes its decisions and how it ultimately chooses where to place its resources. This is just a very simple diagram to show ultimately our process for going through a joint development evaluation, how we ensure what the original value of the land is, and ultimately how that increases in value based on development proposals, and what the role, in this case, of VIA will be in terms of maintaining their financial interest. This is one to guarantee all eyes glaze over. It's the finer points of a feasibility model. In this case, we've got six different iterations shown here in terms of how to evaluate rates of return and what ultimately generates the greatest wealth for the greatest number of players. We'll test a lot of different iterations of different concepts, ultimately showing what works for VIA and what works for the private developer. Just a couple more slides here. In terms of study considerations, I think that there are some challenges. One of the things that we've picked up quickly is that San Antonio has dispersed employment nodes, making it challenging, large-scale geography, pressure on outlying markets. How do you work with these trends and figure out how to get joint development along your central transit corridors? Couple of things that stand out in terms of real estate premiums, our work in other markets show that in the early years, real estate can, developers can achieve a premium of 10 to 15% for development located adjacent to transit and stations. We've seen that premium go up as a market matures, and now, you know, 10, 15, 20% in some cases. How do we ensure that those premiums occur in San Antonio? And then the larger question, once those premiums are established, how do we form the mechanisms to channel that back into the public civic sector? Of all the funds that are invested in these transit systems, how do you capture that value and channel, re-channel it back into the public agencies? That's part of our goal in terms of our work with you. Couple of the other bullet points at the bottom of this, the interests of the next generation and role of transit on placemaking. The communities that are capturing Gen Y are those that are going to succeed in the future. They represent the motivation and the brain power of what's going to make these communities succeed. That generation, that labor and talent is migrating to specific locations across the country, and employers are following the talent. What can you do as a community to attract the talent initially? And what does Gen Y look for? They're not looking for automobiles, and General Motors has issued a study, this is interesting, it was published in the Atlantic, about the declining ownership of vehicles by Gen Y. They're worried, and they're trying to figure out how to compete that and maintain their market share. It represents an amazing opportunity for agencies like VIA to be able to stay. It represents an amazing opportunity for agencies like VIA to be able to step in and cater to a particular niche in the market that is a very important niche for the larger economic development goals of the community. So, finally, placemaking, it goes hand in hand. And how do we create nodes of development that are very strong, and really start to leverage what transit can bring to a community, much more than just ridership? Actual nodes of placemaking throughout the community. I do want to mention that there's synergy with the City of San Antonio in terms of the comprehensive plan effort. The city selected economic and planning systems to help them in terms of their preliminary analysis on three different components related to their comp plan. Vicry Associates happens to be a sub with us on those plans. And what we're going to be looking at is market drivers, and one of the key issues is documenting the way that transit affects growth patterns. So, we will be very much integrated into the city's efforts on comprehensive planning, and transit will be part of those conversations. Just a couple slides left, in terms of next steps, we think there are two. One is to focus on processes and procedures. How does the VIA staff go about as, representing the agency in joint development? We'll be helping structure a framework for that, then we'll also be moving into real estate development analysis, we want to screen opportunities, and then we want to move right, right into scenario testing. These are some specific opportunities, we're very excited about some of these, we think that all of them are unique, we've got the Robert Thompson Transit Center, Wonderland of Americas, very interesting set of players and opportunities there, the Brooks Transit Center, and then the West Side. Lots of, lots of pieces in play on all of these, and very, very interesting opportunities. So, that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Just let, Mr. Kinnon, I'd just like to say, I'm very pleased with the presentation, and with its comprehensive vision, and its, your experiences in, in other places that have really taken off fire in excess of the percentage increases that you've mentioned from being transit proximate. I come from a sort of Hong Kong perspective, where there's an excess revenue generated from the TOD.
Right.
Placed back rental transit, so, I'm impressed, and thank you for joining our team.
My pleasure.
I have a question regarding, so Brian, what is the process going forward? Obviously, this is sort of a multifaceted, one of the variables kind of issue for us, and I'm curious as to what, you know, where, how this will play itself out in terms of board meetings, and, because I do think this is very, it's critical, frankly, to everything that we're doing.
Sure.
I think we need to be as sophisticated as possible at the board level.
Yeah, as Andrew mentioned, I think it's a multifaceted approach. The first one is to work with staff and develop a process and a plan so that we can review and look at opportunities throughout the community, but at the same time, we currently have some things on our plate that we need to analyze and look at, so we've tasked them with all that work. So, we're going to run some concurrent activities here to work through that process and come to the board with some of those items that we have been talking about for, for several months now, if not years.
Any other comments or questions?
Question. What kind of proposals have you guys heard about, Wonderland of Americas?
We, if I can go back, the developer has talked about, let me just preface that by saying that we have just been retained, so I'm on a learning curve, and it's a steep learning curve, and we know a little bit about each of these four projects here on the screen in front of you. What I know about specifically the Wonderland of Americas is that there's two different opportunities, and.
Evaluating them is part of what we're.
Could I, could I suggest that, that this is a real estate item, that maybe the discovery, the information may be more relevant as executives say? Am I, could I?
Want to go into any details?
Any details, yeah, and I don't, I don't know what you were going to say.
I was actually done. That's as much as I planned to say.
To say that you've looked at, at proposals that have been put forth by the current.
Right, and I think there's, there's two different concepts, and we'll be evaluating those.
My concern is just make sure that you guys don't have to waste a lot of time on certain proposals that were presented before in the past. That's the concern, Brian, that you make sure that you understand that.
Absolutely.
Okay, some things have been put to be.
Sure.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say that, that perhaps there's a corollary to that, you know, there are many opportunities, some better than others, there needs to be a sort of qualitative, I think, input from the board, you know, as, as you do your work, because while something may look objectively the key thing for us to do, it may not be the high priority for us at that particular time. So, I think there has to be sort of a give and take going forward, and I want to make sure that, Brian, you of course know that, but that that's sort of a, one of the, sort of the hallmarks of the work that you do, is you constantly get a feel from us as to where we think we ought to be.
Absolutely.
Dr. Gambit?
And have you had a chance to look at, I was impressed that you mentioned the diverse employment nodes that exist throughout the city, and that always is a challenge, although our nodes are smaller than many that you've worked with, as I see it. Is there, have you gotten much into the, those, those nodes at this time in terms of the population and demographics of employment?
Again, we're just starting that too. Interestingly enough, VIA has started this project right about the same time as the city has started its project. One of the things that we will be doing, and I don't know how far you want to go into the details of the, we are getting the QCEW data allocated by geography for all types of employment, and we'll be breaking that down by the two-digit NAICS code to understand where employment is located and what the drivers of the different nodes are. So, we'll have, and this may go beyond the interest of the larger board, but to the extent you're interested in seeing the background detail behind that analysis, I'm happy to provide that.
One, one last point, that I have encouraged the creation of a baseline property value appraisal of where the, as an example, where the LPA or the streetcar goes, and that evaluation process, I think, is important, to get the baseline, and then to look at the increases that you've talked about, about the stimulation, or one ingredient in the, in an economic stimulus for development and jobs.
Yeah, Mr. Gambit, we've already started that process, we do have access to all the GIS data, we have the shape files of the alignment, so we're able to pull a plethora of data all the way back several, several years, based on the Bear County appraisal data, so we've, we've started that process.
Great, and, and I thank you very much for that, Mr. Gambit, and I think it's absolutely essential to making our case in the long run for the wisdom associated with this. And secondly, it would be nice to look at the, I would like to look at the employment data as well, because one can do a similar appraisal associated with development, that induced at least as one ingredient in transit.
Good idea.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know everybody's looking forward to this process.
Okay, good. Glad to hear that.
Moving on to item number eight, B2G Now presentation, Ms. Mendoza?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Diane Mendoza, Diani Mendoza, the DBE Officer, accompanied by Terry Dudley and some other members of staff, who will finalize this presentation today. Today really is an information sharing item, no action is, is required. We really just wanted to give you a current status of the B2G Now software, the Go Live that we've already been implementing, and the ongoing implementation of this system. Terry and staff and both, it's, it's a collaboration of two areas of work, procurement and the disadvantaged business enterprise program. I want to remind, just a general reminder about what this is, since we've been two years in the making of the opening of this portal. It is a web-based software system that's available to all VIA departments and contractors. It really focuses on the advertising and posting of our solicitations, but more importantly, I want to point out, it streamlines and it automates our reporting requirements for the Federal Transit Administration. The reason we procured this program was for regulatory contract compliance. So, it has capacity to do certain things, online vendor registration and applications, which we're already processing, some of those already. It allows us to communicate with contractors and consultants via email regarding compliance issues. It allows online and automated tracking of DBE and SB goal attainment, and online verification of minority women disadvantaged small business enterprise payments. So, it really is where contract administrators input information on specific contracts, we put in the goal setting, and we produce reporting for the FTA based on that information. Oops, there we go. It is cloud-based, it's a web system that we do not house on site, it is on the B2G Now server. We do do data backups every evening, we have loaded, Terry and his staff, assisted by my team, have loaded three years of VIA procurement data into the system, which is available for reporting to FTA or as needed, and usually, we go back three years for the FTA triennials, we wanted that to be available. It does allow accountability and reporting options that allow internal staff, staff to do data export in different formats for comparison by gender, ethnicity, a contract type, dollar values, et cetera, and you'll, we'll do a little bit of a live demonstration for you in just a moment by staff. The major accomplishment was that data conversion, which has taken us quite a bit of time, as you all know. We went from prior to 2013, a paper binder system, to now a web-based electronic system. The contract information in the past was difficult to pull when we were requested either by board or others for the desegregation of data, we had to do that manually. Payment tracking and monitoring was difficult, particularly if a prime or a subcontractor did not self-report a difficulty or an issue, it was difficult for us to know there was a problem. Now, we have this web-based electronic system, all the information is electronically within the program, the payment tracking is electronic, and it is available 24/7 to any contractor who's been awarded a contract with VIA, they have access to their specific contract information. They have a personal password that allows them to view their information, look at their payments or non-payments, and so it allows staff easier access to information. We have modules that we've purchased, and we've only spent twenty-two thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars on this system to date, which is really a good thing. We do not have major subcontractor of any nature, it's been staff internally that has done this. The modules that we have right now are the vendor registration, which we opened up to the public on October 16th at the IDEA conference, so people are already registering, receiving their password. It is a system used by Bear County, the City of San Antonio, and SARS, so many vendors are familiar with the system or already have a password. We do have outreach and event management, it's allowed us to reach out to vendors, it's allowed us to reach out, to drive the numbers for the IDEA conference participation, for example. And so, we do have some sample reports that I'm going to ask, and I want to recognize them for the board. There are two staff members that both Terry and I have depended quite a bit, primarily one, Ashley Ramirez, who is in the contract, she's a contract administrator for Terry, who has taken on the lead role in this particular, she's championed this project, and then our own administrator of compliance, who is Eddie Cruz. So, I'm going to ask them to come up and do the live demo for you, so that you can see the reports, and if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them after that.
Good evening, my name is Ashley Ramirez. As Dr. Mendoza said, I am the lead on this project. What we're going to show you right now is a bit of a live demonstration of what our vendors, our external users will be using. Currently, what you see on your screen is the, the login, how everyone will see once they go into B2G Now. This looks exactly like our website, as you saw that we are going to show our new website, it's going to roll out later this week. B2G will have this webpage looking exactly like that website within a couple of days once we give them the information. And this is the way to get there, the direct link is www.via.mwdsbe.com. What I'm going to show you first is going to the actual site. One of the main reasons why we use this site is that we are able to post our outreach, all our procurement, any type of events we are having, what we are able to do, this gives us a very broad database of vendors. As Dr. Mendoza said, City of San Antonio, SARS, Bear County, all use this system. What we have is, if a vendor comes in and goes to this website, they will click on View Outreach Postings. Currently, these are the outreach postings that we have, if I can click on one of them, this is what a vendor will see. Currently, what, one of the main things that we have right now is our open house, which is going to be on December 5th, we'll be having a meet and greet staff, this will be between the procurement department and the EEO department. And of course, the attached are various flyers, letting them know how to register, how to RSVP for an event, and along with this, we also put our procurements on here. One of the current ones we have on here is a printing fair media, here they can download invitations for bids, whenever we add addendums, RFAs, any of that nature. The second module that we are primarily using is Event. With this one, what we are having right now is our open house, what makes this one unique is that we are able to have, letting people know that they can RSVP for our event, so that way, we're getting an accurate count of who's attended our event, if that's always available right after the event has, has happened, and it lets them know how much space we have, if it's something that's going to be restricted. It gives them exactly everything they need to know, dates, times, any special instructions, directions of any of that nature. And for, and eventually, what we will be doing is that we will be training our users, project managers, and our, and our procurement staff how to do this. So, we'll be posting training sessions, doing one-on-one groups, our small group trainings, we'll also be posting our pre-proposals and pre-bids on this thing, so that way, we'll get an accurate count of who was at our meetings. Next thing I'd like to show you is, once you've gotten a contract, if you have been awarded a contract, that information's going to be put into the system. I'm sorry, let me back up. Let's go to vendor registration, that's one of the things that we are championing right now, we've been trying very hard to make sure that we get that. What we are doing right now is, people will go to this website and click on vendor registration. As Dr. Mendoza mentioned, most people already have a login, if they have done business with City of San Antonio, SARS, or any of that nature, they probably already have a login. What makes us different from those other entities is that we actually have a vendor registration. What's important about that is that, once we have a more robust system with all our vendor registrations, our, all our vendors will be able to download a list showing every prime and sub that we have in our system. This allows them, if they want to be able to make connections, making a prime with a sub and vice versa, who they need to know, who they need to connect with in order to get these big projects, this will give them, this will give them the ability to get that list with all their information, and along with what kind of work are they certified to do. If they do not have a login, they will create an account, B2G tracks everything by tax ID number. Basically, if you do not have a tax ID number, you're not going to be able to register with B2G. They ask them some very simple questions, name, address, once they have done that, they will do a registration with us. Our registration is very simple, it comes straight from the business questionnaire that we put in every pre-bid and every bid and every proposal. It's very simple questions, we are asking for their commodity codes, their certifications, basic questions about their annual revenue, what, how many employees do they have, because we do ask them if they have more than fifty employees to attach an EEO program. As you see, this one doesn't have anything attached right now, but this is a sample that was made. So, also, when people are doing bids or proposals, they can print out this and attach it to their bid or proposal. This does have a one-year expiration date, once that one year kicks in, they will be asked to make, update their information. Once a vendor does reach a contract, this is what they will see, this is a sample contract with a sample vendor. As you can see on the right-hand side, there's an alert, this lets them know that if the sub or the contract administrator has something that they need to know, they will get an email, and as soon as they log in, they will see that as well. This is an example of one of their contracts, this can show them what are the dates, how much they've done, this also shows what, any addendums or any kind of contract modifications that have been made to the contract. This shows payments, they'll be able to see who's on their subcontractor list. Currently, at this time, we do not allow them to add or delete or put in their own payment, in order to make sure that everything is being, everything is very, is very well, I'm sorry, I'm lacking the word right now, documented. We are, we are putting that information in there. Every month, they will be asked to go in and verify that their payments are correct, this includes the subs. That way, we are making sure that on the appliance side, that the subs are being paid, they are being. are being used and that the subs that are, were, said that they were going to be awarded the contract, they are being used. So it is a compliance piece. As far as now, we have a sample report of some of the things that B2G can do. Before, since we were a paper system, this is something that would have taken weeks to put together if someone had asked us for this. This is showing what type of goals for each type of category we've assigned and what we've achieved so far. With B2G Now, since all this information is put in there, I can put in a timeframe and it's going to give this to me in a couple of minutes. And I think right now we're at questions.
Questions?
I have a couple.
Yes.
I want to thank the board for going with me. This actually came through operation oversight just the other day. Wanted a chance to showcase what the innovation by the EEO and US staff have done. This is just really exciting stuff. A couple of things I just wanted you to elaborate on. I know you went over briefly, but regarding vendors or folks who have accounts with SARS, City of San Antonio, Bear County, explain that it's easy for them to transition into our system. If they have a password.
Yes, they already have a B2G login. That was, that's not anything different for them. They'll be able to log in. What the main difference we're asking is that they register with us, which is they filled out that sheet with us. So I mean, that puts them in a different registration. None of the other entities in San Antonio have this. This is something that we are the only one so far in the city that does have it.
It's exciting stuff. Also regarding, would this sort of information help prepare reports, people elaborate on helping prepare reports maybe that the FTA or DOT may have?
What's more important about this B2G is it actually is a mirror image of 49 CFR as far as compliance. As far as the vendor registration, it matches what is called availability and it will allow me to build future DBE goals based on narrowly tailored information, our vendors who are catering towards the needs of VIA as far as support, the services, construction in that area. It would also lead me to then draw electronically the uniform report in the future that I would report to the FTA. The FTA triennial teams have adopted the B2G program as far as the audit process because of mirrors every aspect as far as data collection, compliance, detection of fraud, payment on time within 10 working days, every issue that's part of the subsection rule according to CFR Part 26 or Department of Transportation, that's how they built the program around that.
As far as reports, pretty much anything that we are asking for, it's a very robust system to where we can, if it's not a custom-made report, it's something we can ad hoc.
Once again, that is exciting and phenomenal.
Sounds great. Can I just have a few, a couple of questions I noticed at that committee meeting. When you talked about the registration that we asked folks to do with VIA.
Yes.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding the concept that we're not going to lose people who go to the communal sites or the other sister sites, you know, SARS and what have you.
No.
And they won't forget to register here, won't have a drop-off of problems sometime.
No, we won't. What we have been doing is we have been actively doing outreach, we use the outreach tool as well as the event, getting people to register with us. We've also been in talks with City of San Antonio and SARS because we do work very closely with them with the networking and asking them to make sure that they can push along helping us with registration because since theirs is very different.
Yeah.
We are asking them to mention to some of their vendors that we have a different process. We are with B2G Now, so they are very used to that system. But we do have an extra component that is going to help them in the end with creating partnerships.
And that may address the issue that I'm sort of worrying about and so maybe that will prove to be the case, but I guess I don't want us to lose folks just because they're not knowing to go that extra step.
Yes, we used, yes, we used to use public purchase, which was not, it was a good system, but it did not have the same capabilities that this one does. With the outreach that we can, if certified vendors alone, have at least over 5,000 certified vendors in there, not including non-certified. With that type of tool, I can e-blast and call and get all the information for any type of vendors that we've done business with or we have not done business with yet. So that way, right now we're just starting the system, but I am getting at least two to five new registrations every, every half-day. So it's, it's getting there. It's just we're at the beginning stages.
That's why we have a great outreach tool to reach every DBE.
And I want to alleviate your fears, Board Member Ponic. One of the things I've asked Ashley to do is we do have vendor registration information. We could, we're trying to see how we import that into the system to alleviate that. One of the things that's key to that is that we would have to input all of that information. We certainly could. And so we're trying to see how much response do we get now that the system and the portal is open. At last resort, we would take all our vendor data as we have it today because we've already done all the ID numbers. We did that this summer, in fact. That's what Ashley spent most of her summer on with a, with a temp. All the tax ID numbers are already identified, which was a missing component for us in being able to open the portal. So if we can't import it or we can't find a way, we can do that also as a backup plan.
The other thing I would like to mention, the other thing I believe you all received was register with VIA. This is something that I wrote for all our vendors. It gives them a step-by-step guide. Every time we send out emails, some of our contract administrators have had that attached to their emails, whether it's reply or a new email, they have it attached to let them know this is our new system, this is how we are going to start doing business. Please give a call and it's attached so they'll have a step-by-step guide of how to register.
Regarding, you said the call, I remember during the committee meeting, if somebody can't access their site or detail, they can call in and you all can actually enter the information for them.
Yes, currently I can do that right now. Since I am the administrator, I have access completely to that system. So if that is a problem, I have spent over an hour registering one person, walking them through every single step. So it's not a problem. It's something that we definitely can do.
I know this is the last agenda item, so I only have about 20 more questions. The vendor update process, does that sound like, it sounds, I'm worried that, do we reset everybody to zero and they have to kind of re-enter everything or is it just a confirmation if there's been any change? You know, tell us, otherwise we have to keep this as your.
It's the latter. What it is, is that a B2G, we have it set up where it's every year, we send in, the system will send them an email every time they log in, whether it's through our portal or through SARS or any of that, they will get an alert letting them know your registration is up for expiration. They need to go in and update their information. They'll send it back to us, we'll review and we'll go ahead and approve or ask them to update still.
So updating means what, be filling out the whole thing or?
No, just changing a couple of things. If they, their annual gross has gone up, they'll need to do that. If they don't have a certification anymore, they'll need to remove that. So it's more of basic stuff that we would like to know about their.
So maybe just a few entry changes if nothing much has changed about you and then you just reconfirm and that's it?
Yes.
Thanks.
That's good.
Any other questions?
I would just like to share that I was a contractor on the other side of the table for we, with Houston Metro and they used B2G and it was very useful to the contractor and it was also a very useful thing to the agency in that for very large contracts, Houston Metro would not compensate me until they had proof in the system that I had already paid all my subcontractors. So I would have to sometimes chase down a contractor that had earned $30 the previous month and wasn't, you know, motivated to go in and hit confirm so that I could get my $3 million check. But it was very, it was very effective in making sure that I paid my contractors.
I do like, I like that.
In time. And the other thing I would like to do is really recognize Ashley and Eddie and then Diani and Terry. And I think this really shows, I think, why we have a successful program in that there is such a great union here between the procurement side and the business opportunity side that make the whole thing work. And so thank all of you for that.
Agreed to that.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Good presentation. There's one other item before we adjourn. I believe Mr. Martin would like to have the floor for a few minutes. You didn't want to speak, did you?
Well, what this is all about, my children who live in Tulsa, Oklahoma are insisting that we move there. So we will make one more meeting with the VIA board in December and then we'll be relocating to Tulsa. And we've lived here for many years and it's a very tough decision, but I just want to thank everybody for everything that you all have done and I'm going to miss it very much.
I want to remind everyone that his service goes far beyond his board service because he was the Citizens Advisory Board Chair for many years. So we're truly indebted to all his years of contributions to VIA. And of course, we'll have more time to talk about that next month.
We got one more month.
Yeah. So that concludes our business. We're looking for an adjournment here?
So moved.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.